With me are representatives from Continental Cable Vision. I'll introduce them. My far left is Steve Solomon, who is the Public Affairs Director. John Bowie is the Legal Counsel. Len Temari is the Regional Director.
General Manager.
Cecilia Lang to my right is the Community Service.
Educational Community Relations.
She is here on behalf of Jim McKeever, our local NCTV Channel 2 manager, who is not able to be here. And to my far right, Scott Nicholson. Technical?
Technical.
Okay. My name is Dennis Desmond. I'm the Chairman of the Cable TV Board. We'll field questions from the audience. I would ask that you keep the questions specific to the new licensing agreement. Any customer issues that you may have regarding your own cable service right now, Continental will take your name and number and get back to you on it. Okay? The floor is open. Sir?
The new system is going to consist of the same wiring? Or are you going to go to fiber optic cable? Are you going to go with a very high bandwidth so we can tie into communication systems with it?
Yes.
You're going to go to fiber optic?
Yeah, it'll be a hybrid fiber optic coax system, which is the standard platform, very high bandwidth, 750 megahertz.
Okay. Are you going to tie in with any -- at any time you're going to tie in for the telephone system?
Well, actually, the system will be capable of delivering telephone signals when Continental can provide local telephone service, when state regulations and law provide for them. Will it be tied to the telephone system?
No, but it'll have the capability.
It will have the capability of delivering local phone service. Yes.
How many channels do you intend to provide on the ordinary TV?
Initially, as Steve said, it will be a hybrid fiber coaxial system. It will be capable of many more than 77 channels over time, but we will activate 550 megahertz, which is the bandwidth that will be activated to deliver 77 channels initially.
Will we have any say in what channels you're apt to add to it?
Would be interested in your opinion, but the city cannot negotiate specific channels or require specific channels. They can indicate categories, broad categories of programming that they would like to see have some coverage: children's programming, educational programming, sports program. But they cannot require a specific channel to be carried.
Will you do a survey of the people in the city?
We do ongoing surveys. As a matter of fact, the changes that we recently made in the spring to try to, during this interim period, enhance the limited channels that we have now was based on a customer survey when we added, I believe, AMC and New England Cable News. They were the two highest rated channels when we did a survey.
Plus, if I might add, as our industry faces competition, it's clearly in our interests as well as the consumers to provide what would ultimately be market-driven. If there's a service out there that we know people want, it would clearly be good business to provide that service.
Are there any specific channels that you have heard or seen that you're interested in and you'd like us to know about?
I can answer that, yes.
Okay. What are they?
I like the sci-fi channels. And the History Channel looks good. AMC was a great addition.
Thank you.
My husband and I came tonight because we've been.
Excuse me. Could I ask that when you have a question, you step up to the microphone?
Oh.
I didn't know we were being televised either.
You can actually sit if you could pull the microphone and you could sit up here so that people at home could hear you as well. I know how it is to have to stand up in public. Sitting down might be more comfortable. That would be fine.
Well, what my wife started to say is that we just moved here from the New York City area a couple of months ago, and we love it here. However, we really feel, well, I'll put it this way, we really got a tremendous amount of satisfaction out of CNBC and CNBC Two. To watch our Congress in action was not only interesting in itself, but it gave us a sense of really being, in a way, kind of participant in the whole process. And so I'm wondering, before this new system goes into effect, which I guess will be, what, a year or more from now, right?
Approximately.
Is there any possibility of adding CNBC Two?
You mean C-SPAN Two?
I mean C-Span Two. C-Span Two. CNBC, okay, too, but C-Span, C-Span Two, I'm sorry, yeah. In other words, will you be adding anything until the new system goes into effect?
As John mentioned, we're always doing surveys, and we also track the monthly letters and calls about channels and cable networks. The dilemma we have here in Northampton is the channel capacity is maxed out. To add something that may be very worthwhile also means taking away something that is of value to somebody else. So what we do is we continually look at the surveys, and we're looking for opportunities to fine-tune our offerings prior to rebuilding, but it really depends on what our customers are telling us.
The system currently is.
That would be a definite opportunity when you do the rewiring. Mr. Huey?
No, my name is Ralph Korsvet.
Okay. Mr. Huey also wanted C-Span Two, and I talked to him today.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm really quite sure that, I mean, a lot of people probably have become addicted to C-Span Two when it's available, you know?
We enjoy hearing that because it is a cable channel that is totally funded by the cable industry and the public service. So where we do have sufficient bandwidth and channel capacity, C-Span Two and C-Span One, which covers the House of Representatives.
Right.
Is typically on the standard service. So I anticipate that when we do increase the channel capacity, C-Span Two will be added.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the things that I wanted to mention, too, with the C-Span Two, while it's not available on the subscriber system right now, is that we are willing to work with teachers that are looking to use some of that programming in their classroom. Where if I know of a social studies teacher that wanted to tape a particular hearing or program, I'll work down in the Springfield office to make sure that they get a copy of that program. On an educational level, C-Span Two has been very well received. So we want to help in the schools initially, while we can't bring it right into the home, we will try to give them as much of the materials that are available.
Okay. Thank you.
More comments?
My name is Glifera Anasiench, and my experience with Continental Cable and public access has been in a different, couple different ways. Initially, the first one was as a YMCA fitness instructor. We had a senior fitness program on the cable, which was very good for a lot of shut-ins and for people that are in the capacity of sitting in chairs and doing things on that level. The other experience I had was through the PTO. Before the PTOs, before the school councils came in, the PTOs fulfilled a different role. One of the programs that I had on the cable access was a panel discussion about the state of education in Massachusetts. And we had state representatives, state senator, and somebody from the Department of Education. It was about two hours long, and the questions had come to me from parents throughout the city, a lot of them who could not come to the meetings because of childcare issues and job responsibilities, et cetera. So it worked out very well because people were able to have their input, have their questions posed to the panel, and have the panel answer the questions at length. My latest experience has to do with, I'm the chairperson for the Northampton Council on Aging, and we have decided that we really want to reach out and reach a lot of the elders in the community once again who are not being reached other ways. So what we plan to do is to have a short program, which will include events that are going on in the area. It will also include some issues that we think people need to have more information about. It's going to be in conjunction with the YMCA. The YMCA right now has an active older adult program, which is conducted at the Y. Most of the people who come are active older adults. However, a lot of the topics that are discussed are something that would be appropriate for anyone, especially elders. So we would have short little interviews and give them information as to where they can get other resources. The other aspect of that would be also to integrate fitness into it so that people can sort of infuse fitness into their lives in a general way. Over the course of the summer, I took the program to teach me better how to use the camera and a little bit of the editing. I haven't finished it yet, but I'm in the process of doing it. It's been quite an experience. One time I was out with my camera, and some dog sort of came at me, but I had it all on tape, so. Anyways, and also, we plan to expand this in the future if we find that it's necessary. Personally, I think that public access TV is democracy at its best. It's something of the people, by the people, and for the people. And I hope that we continue it, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is June Turkot, and I'm an access user. And I don't know how to put this exactly, but I took your classes at Continental Cable to use the camera and editing, and I really loved it. But something seemed to happen. I have to say, your staff, the people who teach there, the three people or the two people that are primarily Terry and Jim are wonderful people, you know, Terry Morrison, who run the NCTV programs. They're very helpful. They're cooperative. They're interested. They're very bright people that are, you know, obviously a real credit to the company. But I have a complaint about the way that the system that we have. I know other cable companies can, there's two ways of running the access. One is through the Continental Cable or one of the companies. Another is through a membership nonprofit, what do you call these things?
Access Corporation?
Yes, yes, an access corporation. And I have, and because of that, the idea of your, the First Amendment rights, the idea of public access is expanded. As things stand now, people can make programs through your company, but the company owns half the rights. And so that's very discouraging to a lot of creative people. It's wonderful on a municipal level, you know, that you have all these civic programs and, you know, basketball games and things like this. But on an individual creative level, you're not going to see poets out there, you know, making programs where half of their rights are, I mean, I just think that it's discouraging to people. When I took the classes, a number of people had projects, and then they dropped the projects over time. And one of the most discouraging factors was this principle where the Continental Cable Vision owns half your rights. Now, if you had a book published, you wouldn't want the publisher to have that kind of say or jurisdiction. So, I mean, I know, I'm not all that well-versed in all this. I'm new to it. But it seems to me that, you know, it really does stifle people considerably. And then one of the things that happens is you have all this excitement at how wonderful it is to be able to get a free course in how to use a video camera, how to edit, you know, and to be able to take this equipment out. And then you see people, when they start to do their own programs, start to lose interest because it's discouraging to find that you don't really have, you know, the, do you want to say something?
Yeah. If I could, I want to maybe clarify really two things that should give you permission to speak freely and use your First Amendment and access rights fully. Continental is very strict in observing the FCC guidelines. We make no consideration of content beyond their three basic prohibitions, that it can't be commercial in nature, it can't be libelous or scandalous, and it cannot be obscene in nature as determined by the community. The use of the dual copyright is a protection for our customers, not for Continental. What it says is essentially that you're creating this programming using equipment and funds provided from our subscribers, our customers. This is a way we can ensure that an access user does not take a program that they've created and then go out and market it without some consequence or some permission back to the cable company. It has no effect at all in terms of the content that you put into that program. The content is the access users. All we're doing is saying you can't sell that without first getting back to us and allowing us to represent our customers.
I disagree with you. I know it's, everything done is non-commercial. So there's not, it's not a marketability issue in that sense. I mean, it's like public TV in a way. I guess there's no, it's not a commercial.
Is the issue that you would like to further distribute this at no charge to other people?
No.
Because there would be no problem with a copyright violation if you indicated.
The issue is ownership. The issue is ownership. That's one of the issues.
But ownership for what purpose, if I could ask?
Well.
If it's not for a commercial purpose, then that's fine.
What purpose is there to any ownership?
Nonprofit purposes.
I mean, there's the purpose of the ownership of, if you, if, most people's, the programs they do will never, you know, be anything except something shown here, but you never know. And if you have, we have a community with people, with all kinds of creative people on a college level, on a, you know, professional level. I mean, just, you know, the Ninja Turtles came out of some guys doing, you know, their own.
June, if I can just.
So it's just, it seems to me very discouraging to artists to do that. And it's philosophically discouraging, and it's actually literally discouraging to people to want to do more creative things.
There are two things that I just add. One is, if this is something that the community wants to readdress in terms of the public access guidelines.
Yes.
There's a procedure in place within 90 days of a new license coming out, the Cable Advisory Committee or Council has to put together a handbook of guidelines. Those guidelines that now exist were approved by the past Cable Advisory Committee. So we don't have a problem with this being revisited, but I do got to point out, it's not a purely theoretical protection for our customers. There was just most recently a case in Connecticut where an access user did produce a program using the access equipment provided by customers, you know, by our customers, and then turned around and sold it. And that's not fair to the community that's providing the public access. And all we really want to do, this is the best way we've been able to figure out so far to do it, is to preclude somebody from working for free using the equipment provided by the community and then making a profit off of it with nothing going back to the community. But like I said, if we want to come back and look at this again as part of the rulemaking process for public access, that's always on the table and that's available.
I don't see where, I mean, I'm sorry, but, I mean, one person made a profit on this. You're making a very considerable profit on the city of Northampton, and part of that profit goes into the community access channel. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't fault you making a profit. And this is, and these people, I don't know who they are or what they're doing, but all I know is most people doing this, it's non-commercial. It is not for profit. I mean, we live in America. This is the American dream. If some person, some obscure person somewhere in the country is able to do something like that, I'm sure it's extraordinary and unusual. But as far as protecting customers, I'm one of your customers, okay? And you're not protecting me from anything, you're personally. I mean, I guess I know that there's no harm to customers because we have a 1984, whatever it is, cable bill where, you know, the issue of libel is addressed. I mean, the company is not liable for the content of programs. Am I correct, or am I wrong about that?
It's currently under review.
It is?
By the federal courts because of the 1992 Cable Act that amended the 84 Act.
Okay.
But that's, I think that's a side issue. It's not really the issue that you're addressing.
Well, anyway, I mean, I, that's my point, that we're entering on an electronic age where, you know, the whole economy is based on a knowledge of these things. And, you know, this could either be used, a community is built out of, I mean, this could be, you know, pretty much just a routine thing, you know, this community access, or it could be more of a living community, you know, format. And if the community has more say in it, I really feel that, you know, it would be a much better, well, I mean, I think the future is what I'm looking at. This is a 10-year contract. This is not a one-year, two-year, three-year contract. And so many things happen within 10 years. So I would like to see the city not tied down to something that would limit this area. And I know there's 351 towns in Massachusetts, and 250 of them have cable of one kind or another and cable programming, and many of them are opting to have another format for their public access because there are a lot of ways in which people are restricted that are, I'm not, you know, well-versed enough to describe, but they're there. And, you know, the kinds of things that don't exist that could exist and would exist if there were more, you know, if the, if, well, I guess I'm opting for a different system in that, you know, that area. And I don't know if I'm off-bounds or anything bringing this up here, but, well, I tried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Casey. I have other public access questions for you. I'm currently, I've been for like the last nine months using the studio. I was trained in producing some shows. One of the questions that I have with regard to equipment and if there is a certain amount of money that is allocated each year for equipment, and does the community have a voice in the kind of equipment that they want to put into the public access studio?
That's an excellent question, and those are all issues that are being addressed jointly by Continental and the committee as we are moving ahead with the renewal process. And we're interested in your input in terms of what equipment you believe is necessary.
Okay. Do you have a schedule of when these funds are available and when equipment purchases have to be made by?
We haven't finalized that schedule yet, but we have proposed, I believe, Steve.
Yeah, we're looking at putting in, I'm sorry. We're proposing that we're going to put in and operating in equipment about $250,000 over the life of the license. That's both operating and equipment funds. They're two installments, and I'd have to look again at the proposal. But I, we recently, I believe, proposed putting in another 25 at the time of the renewal and then an additional sum thereafter. We also, you know, this is just a matter of our policy, even if it's not explicitly written in a proposal. We maintain the functionality of the equipment that we provide. In other words, if, you know, equipment needs repair or needs replacement, that's what's done. If you look at the studio as it exists in Northampton today compared to the studio that was originally installed, it not only meets that functionality but exceeds it. That's generally our policy.
Okay. So equipment repair and replacement is separate from equipment upgrade and?
Yes.
Separate budget.
And you also spoke of there being a, some kind of an outline book that's supposed to come out soon for the public access?
Outline book.
Well, there's the access policies and procedures.
Oh, the handbook? Yeah, you should have at the Public Access Center today, a handbook. I think it's probably beige or tan. Those are the rules as approved by the Cable Advisory Council in the last go-around, the last revision, that I think is probably about three years ago now.
And there's a new one scheduled to come out?
Well, at the time of the license, it's kind of standard operating procedure that we go through, and would the Cable Advisory Council review the rules, take up issues like the copyright issue and any other issues that come up.
Okay. So will you have a schedule of when those meetings will happen?
Yeah, there'll be the regularly scheduled Cable Advisory meetings.
Oh, okay. All right. Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Technical question again. A comment. You know, the telephone companies can put the integrated digital lines in before too long so that we can have high-speed access, but no one is certain how wide bandwidth they're going to be. I don't like the term "information superhighway," but there are nodes like in Hammers, and we can access them through the local telephone lines. And now pushing up to about 2,600 watts. Over the weekend, they went that high. But is there any possibility of the cable system tying into sort of the national system like the Internet so that we can access it at high bandwidth?
Yeah. One of the advantages of the kind of platform that we're building with the high bandwidth is it's a natural to interconnect with this thing we all hate to call the "information superhighway." Nationwide, there are a number of tests going on. Continental did one of the first in Cambridge. The exact technology, how you're going to make this work and how you make it work in the marketplace is still very much up in the air. But we are looking at that as one of our new businesses.
So you're going to leave it as an open thing in your new contract?
Well, yeah. You know, in fact, although you read a lot about these tests and there's a lot of excitement about it, they are just that. If you look around the country, you probably count on both hands or most of one hand how many tests are actually up and running. It's at the market test phase. We don't know exactly how it's going to be delivered. We don't even know exactly what packages, services people will pay for, what they'll pay for. These are all questions that have to be answered. But I think the real point is, is that the system that we're building is ready to expand into those services.
I think it's safe to predict that during the 10-year term of this contract, high-speed access to Internet service and other online services will be available over cable, and this system will be capable of delivering them. It will require additional investment by the company in order to make that happen. But if the market is there and if we are confident that we can get a return on that investment through selling that as a service in competition with other potential providers like the phone company, then we will make that investment. And the good thing is that this cable system will not be obsolete or will not be incapable of providing that system. It will be two-way capable and will have return capability sufficient for those types of services.
Because right now, it costs, at least it costs me about $300 a year for the services.
We're looking at beta testing and getting school systems for like $100 a site per month with very high buy rates. But again, that's to test the market, see the reliability of it, and find out what kind of pricing is competitive. Better than T1 type. You're talking Ethernet up to 10 megabits.
I know. I dumped at 500 megabytes. That's a guy that's, you and I, kind of downloading 20,000.
So you know what you're talking about.
Hi. My name is Gloria Tupercizes, and I do produce a program on local access. Actually, I produced, I think, about 45 programs. And what cable, and being an access user, has allowed me to do for a lot of people and children is to create a public place for them to be seen. I've produced a variety of programs with my professional women's club to try to get the word out that there is a professional women's club in the city of Northampton. I have a kids' program that I do in December called Just Playing Kids. These kids look so forward to this program. One year, we had Santa Claus on, and they talk about what they want for Christmas, what they do after school, homework, just be a kid. And I tell them, be yourself and act natural, and they do. I have kids calling me up to be on the program, and I tell them, if they're good. And also, when the Florence Civic Center was trying to get the word out about a book that we were trying to get published, we needed to get the word out there, obviously, to get money to get this book published for the civic organization. Needless to say, I used access again to talk about the book. The book got published. We did raise money, and we went on to publish two more books. For myself personally, I don't feel as though I've ever been hindered in any way by cable in a creative sense. I have been allowed totally to produce the programs of my choice in a wide variety, from children's program to working with the, to civic organizations that I belong to. I also produce pageants, and I do a dance competition. I've had these kids on. Some of the older girls have gone on to Washington, D.C., and to Oklahoma to participate in a higher level of pageants. And I've been able to have them on local. and I do a dance competition. I've had these kids on. Some of the older girls have gone on to Washington DC and to Oklahoma to participate in a higher level of pageants, and I've been able to have them on locally, interview them, and flash back to when they were performing in these other cities. So it's created a wide spectrum, a wide world for myself. I love it. I enjoy doing the programs, and I enjoy very much working with Jim McKeever. I learned a lot from Jim. Terry is wonderful to work with. When I first started, I was, my first interview was on Main Street, where people were in the window looking at you, and you're trying to become an interview people, and this was my first experience of doing a show, and it was horrendous, but the only request that I would like to have, if it could ever be possible, is to have a larger studio. That way, I could get more kids' programs on, but they need space for things that they're doing. But we can always work around that by filming somewhere else and then actually showing the, the program. But that's all, that's all I have to say, is being an access user. It's been a very positive learning program, and the people I've worked with, not only in Northampton, but other areas of cable have been. And it also opened up the whole state of Massachusetts for the cable users. When I did the program for the Business and Professional Women's Club in Northampton, I was the only one doing a cable program for them, and then when we had our state meeting, I got this word out to other organizations. We have 35 business and professional women clubs in the state of Massachusetts, and a wide variety now are using the cable stations to get the word out about their programs. So it really did mushroom from here, originally in Northampton.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Ayers. I live in Florence, and the main question that I have regarding the increased band capacity, I'd like to see some more sports stations added, in particular, WGN in Chicago, the Atlanta station, ESPN2. I just want to know what the chances are that those could be added to the, with increased capacity, if those could be added.
There, there are two issues there. One is, is the increased capacity. I mean, you can expect, as we said before, that we're going to listen to our customers, and certainly in the case of something like ESPN2, we're, we're hearing you. The bandwidth or the channel capacity question is just one half of the equation. When you're looking at stations like WGN and WTBS, there are copyright implications, the fees that the cable company has to pay, which are extremely onerous. Once we get over, is it three imported?
Two.
Two.
Two in this one.
Yeah, two imported broadcast stations or superstations. They would have a, a direct, very visible effect on everybody's bill, and that's one of the things that we have to weigh. And we're putting together our basic, or, you know, cable programming service packages. How do we keep it affordable so that people can afford to buy the product we have to sell? And that's a bit of a balancing act.
What, what about the addition of Boston, both Boston Networks and Independence? Is that something that could be easily done?
That's, that's exactly the issue, right there. Every imported broadcast signal that we bring in and-
That is not local to this market.
Even, even a station like, say, 25 or 68, those are?
Yeah, those are exactly the case.
Because they're not local to this market, so you cannot carry them without incurring copyright liability.
The, the law's been put together basically to protect the local broadcasters in the local market, and that's where those penalties are.
Is Hartford considered local?
Uh, depends. Channel 3 is a local station to Northampton. I'm not sure, 6, I believe 61 is.
61 is. They're both, so you couldn't, see, I'd, I'd rather, as a viewer, I'd rather see-
Baltimore-Boston?
The seat, well, not only that, but if it was possible to, you know, I know you can't add everything wholesale, but if you could flip-flop the CBS affiliate and the Fox affiliate to the Boston stations.
Can't do it, unfortunately. Not under the current rules, but they're always looking at them in Washington, and there's always hope that they'll open up the market so we can start to offer more broadcast signals, because today, we can receive them in different ways and off-air. Before, there was technical limitations as well. We couldn't get a clean signal received here and then retransmitted on the cable system. It would look awful, even if there weren't copyright problems. But today, with fiber optics, we can transport signals longer distances. And hopefully, the, the copyright laws will be modified till we could start having more flexibility in adding broadcast channels.
The ones we want.
Right.
Let me ask you this, John. What, what would be the possibility of putting those kinds of stations on a special tier?
On, on a higher tier so that those who wanted it would be, you know, and were willing to pay more for, would have access to it?
It's a possibility, but I think the amount of customers that would subscribe to that tier would not even cover the copyright expense. That's the problem.
Because your copyright expense would not be limited to just those people who took it, where the rules are written. It's spread across your entire subscriber base.
For a certain level of service, which is that broadcast service, the eight, nine, 10 dollar service.
Hi, my name is Riccito, and I live in Ward 1 in Northampton, and I'm here to reiterate Andy's support for, for getting more sports programming like ESPN2. It sounds like from your comment that you, you have, a lot of people are interested in getting the Deuce. It sounds like they'll be likely added.
It's a likely addition.
And when's the soonest, I'm, I'm just trying to get a timetable right now. When's the soonest you think viewers in Northampton would be able to get the Deuce?
Probably summer to early fall next year.
And as I understand it, it's not like, as you said before, you can't add specific channels. You add tiers and groups. I wonder what's the additional cost? What, I-
It will be subject either to, depending on what tier it is added to, it will either be subject to federal regulations and set according to those formulas, or it will be set according to market price if it's added to a, let's call it a new product here, that we, we can set that price based on market demand.
What is, what's your best estimate for how much it's going to be? Because I mean, obviously, right now, if we're adding a channel like NESN or a sports channel, that's like a premium channel, that's $10.
Right.
Right there. I mean, I like the Deuce, and I'm not sure I'm willing to pay $10 for it.
I see members of the press here, so, and I've, I, I am uncomfortable quoting retail pricing because it's still being developed, but-
You're talking to a member of the press, too.
Okay.
I'm a sports writer for the Gazette, so, self-interested. As a consumer, I want to know, like, I mean, I, I certainly want the channel. I don't want to be paying, you know.
Rick, I, I think it's fair to say that it has to be priced, because ESPN2 is available off a satellite right now with a DirecTV dish in a package of programming that's priced at a certain level. We're going to have to be, make it available to our customers at a similar or better level, or they're not going to subscribe to us. So I wouldn't see charging a premium for a channel like ESPN2, like a NESN or a sports channel, which is a specialty channel-
Right.
-that has all of the Red Sox, Celtics, et cetera. I see it being part of a tier that will be priced very competitively.
And, and the other stations in that tier aren't necessarily sports programming.
That's correct.
So.
It would be a mix of types of programming.
And we are even looking at models where we will provide the option for customers. I'm, I'm not saying this will happen, but that tier of sevens, eights, nine channels would be offered on a purely à la carte basis, too. So for 75 cents a piece, you could buy as many as you want, or get the whole shooting match for $2.95 or $3.50.
And I imagine that you'd probably be conducting a survey, similar to the one you did in the spring with AMC, and, and by, probably my, my parting shot is that, in that tier, I'd love to see Comedy Central in that, too, because I know a lot of-
Another good one.
Another reporter at the Gazette actually wanted me to-
Sports and comedy.
Sports and comedy, that's about.
The sports and comedy tier, all right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's a nice concept.
Hi, I've got to go do my shopping, that's why I'm so pushy. Actually, I'm just so pushy because I'm so pushy. My name is Kathy Moore. I'm in Ward 3, and I have been trained over at Northampton Cable to use the equipment like these guys are doing right now, and it's, I mean, I have to say, the staff there is like the best. For most people in the community, bridging the gap between the technology you have down there and, you know, where they're coming from is a huge job, requires a lot of, a good sense of humor and a great grasp of the equipment, et cetera. With me, definitely a great sense of humor, and they are great. But I'd say, as a working person and somebody who's very involved in the community, and somebody who would like to be using this equipment more, I find it very difficult to get the kind of time to be able to take the equipment out and get the special kind of attention, and, and I'm speaking specifically of editing time. If you're a working person and you have any kind of life after work, and you try and make this a part of it, it's very hard to get the kind of attention you need to really learn that editing equipment. They're only given so much time to teach you how to use it, and it's just highly technical. There's a big chasm between the average person in the community and the tech, and the, what you need to really master the equipment. And, you know, you've got some good people working down there, and they're not going to let you touch it unless you know how to use it. And I would say, there's a lot of people that are scared off, not because the people who work there aren't very welcoming and trying their best, but they can't be, be there and sign out the equipment or give you the kind of attention you need. You get a six-week class, or, and, and there's just not enough time for people to really learn a lot of the equipment with the kind of attention you need. So I don't know what this committee can do. I would say you've got really good people there, you know, running the station, and I think they're really open to the community, but in, just as an average person with probably an average cerebral cortex, you know, I went through the, the six-week editing class, and, I mean, it was difficult to, to master this stuff. I mean, I can do, I can run the cameras like these guys are doing right now, and, and I've done that, and I've, I think a lot of people don't really like, you know, volunteering to do this kind of stuff, like I did for school, not school committee, for city council. It's very interesting, but you want to go beyond that. And I worked for the Family Planning Council of Western Mass, and the pub, one of the public affairs people there, and I'd really love to do it, uses the stuff to do programming, but again, like, there's just a limited amount of staff time down at the station to really address my needs. So I would be somebody who really would take this stuff and run, because I just never met a microphone I didn't like, I guess. Just, you know, seriously, I would love to, love to use it for my agency, and I think this community has an interest in what my agency does, and a lot of things that, you know, that are going on.
Thanks.
Thank you. Got to get to Super Stock and Shop.
Hi, my name is Liz Renzenbrink, and I co-produce a show called Girl Girl TV. And how do I describe this show? It's kind of an eclectic show about being a lesbian. And for me, you know, you watch TV, and there's really no education or exposure or any characters on TV that are lesbians. I mean, there are a few, but for me, I'm able to, through the show, you know, kind of define my community and put on the show what I would like to see on regular TV. And that's, cable access has been great in that way for me. And working with Jim and Terry and Dan has been really good. They are very good people. But in terms of equipment and access to equipment, I have to agree in a lot of ways with what the woman before me was just talking about. You know, there's three rooms, well, there's two rooms, and then this other room. And you can only do certain things in each room, so if you come in one night and you want, and you have reserved a room, but you really need to use the other room for something, and that room is taken, like, there's no flexibility. And I don't, you know, when you're editing and when you're producing a show and doing stuff, you really need that kind of flexibility. And I don't know, you know, you were giving some numbers out about how much you spend on equipment and stuff like that, and I really don't know how much this stuff costs, but we, we need more stuff, I guess. I don't know if you want me to go into details, or if I'm supposed to talk to Jim about this kind of stuff.
No, you can give your, feel free to give your opinion.
Well, there is, you can do effects in room 2, but you can't do it in room 1, and there's only hi-eight in room 2, and you can't use, do dub hi-eight stuff in room 1, and you can only do VCR dubbing up to, up to 3/4 in the main room, and it's just very confusing. You really have to, you know, know what you're going to do when you go in there, and it doesn't always work, you know. So that's, that's a big, and time, like, if we had, we, like, a lot of people I know work 40 hours a week, you know, 9 to 5, and they need evenings or weekends to be able to go in and do this stuff, and that's not really possible all the time. Weekends aren't really open, and the, you know, those are considerations that I would like to see.
I just want to let you know regarding one thing, the, the problem that you have going between different formats of videotape. One of the things that we're working on is providing a uniform format for all of our access use everywhere in the valley. It'll help us better support that in terms of training our engineers on repairing it and keeping it running. It'll also get away from this problem. The problem evolved, though, because there were so many formats that were available. We have this pull in the other direction, which is, well, I want to work in 3/4 inch, I want to work in SVHS, I want to work in hi-eight. So we're trying to do a balancing act, and unfortunately, you're caught in the middle of our being able to sort out, or actually, the industry sorting out, what is the format that's going to be prevalent. In the meanwhile, we have to figure out with a finite amount of funds how we provide the best service for everybody. What we're going to is, is having an interformat suite, which I think will solve a lot of your problems.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
While we're on the subject of, of, on the, the local access channel, I, I've got two letters that were sent to me via the mayor's office, and they're being distributed to those who want them endorsing NCTV, the studio. One is from Ray Ellerbrook, the director of recreation in Northampton, the other from Mary Jane McAdini, who is in Leeds. She is a producer, volunteer, and a viewer at NCTV. Either one of these people could be here tonight, but they also send along their endorsements.
Hi, my name's Lizzie Donahue, and I'm a church secretary by day and a video producer by night. I also work 40 hours a week, 9 to 5, and I began doing video at NCTV a year and a half ago through the guidance of Jim McKeever, Terry Morris, and Dan Knapp, who have been extremely helpful. And I, you know, I just reiterate what everybody else has said about them. I also have found a hard time with the editing, although now they've opened up Saturdays, 12 to 5, which has been a great help. And on one end, I wouldn't want to see them have to be overworked, but if there's somehow, it could be worked out where someone else could be hired to work later in the evenings. I think that would help a lot of us out. I'd just like to add also, in terms of the artistic component, I haven't been discouraged by the fact that I have to share my profits, which I haven't had any profits, but I have had, one of my videos, so far being eight festivals, I can now say technically all over the world, because over the weekend, I found out it got into a festival in New Zealand and Berlin, Germany.
Wow.
And, yeah, and another one of my videos, another one of my videos got into the Northampton Film Festival, which was very, so I've, I, the reason why I'm also not discouraged is I went to a couple of the festivals where my video was at, and I was, you know, talking to people and networking, and what I find out is most people have to pay to use equipment, and the, the price of using the equipment is incredibly expensive. So any, I mean, I couldn't even come close to the amount of money I've saved by doing it through NCTV. So even if I made, say, $10,000 and had to give $5,000 to NCTV, I'd still be ahead of the game at this point with the amount of hours I've logged in there and the amount of time I've used of the equipment. So I just wanted to add that, that I, I hope public access remains public access, and that if anything, it expands, because it's, it's very important. I appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rutherford Platt. I live at 207 Randolph Place, and I came just on the spur of the moment, as prompted by a letter in the Gazette the other day about C-SPAN 2. I also wrote a letter to the Gazette last summer about that channel. I actually got hooked on C-SPAN 1 last winter when I had the flu during the height of the Gingrich Revolution. I could hardly turn it off for about four or five days. It was absolutely fascinating. And I have watched C-SPAN 2 traveling in other places, particularly in Washington DC, with this, with the Senate side. with the Senate side of our two-house Congress. And we are facing, of course, some of the most important legislation in the 20th century, really, in the next session of Congress, and much of that is going to be in the Senate concerning Medicare, the environment, tax cuts, and so forth. So I would simply appeal to the board and the company to provide C-SPAN 2 free of charge. I just think it would be a terrific public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I want to come up there because I'm going to pull a little rope to the left.
You're right. Because of you, so I'm so waiting outside that we were almost auditioned for Commonwealth Opera.
Well, I was late because I was reading a newspaper article that said the schedule was started at 7:30. However, that's not the point. I wrote my letter because you had written your letter, and I submitted.
Thank you. I thought your letter was very good.
You should start a C-SPAN 2 club.
I would seriously like to have enough people interested in C-SPAN 2 so that we would get it. And I'd appreciate knowing-
We hear you loud and clear.
How soon? How soon, Lord, how soon?
Unfortunately, it won't be added until the new system is built. So you'll have to spend another long winter of discontent.
When will the new system be ready?
Our plans are for sometime, summer, summer to into the fall, because it will take time afterward the system is completed, activated, tested, to then remarket each neighborhood. We'll go on a node-by-node, light it up, and then visit every person's home by appointment and tell them all about the new system and the product offerings that they have available, and also to talk about the new cable box and how nice it is to use.
Because of the system architecture that we intend on deploying in Northampton, it wouldn't be necessary to wait for the entire community to be rebuilt, if you will. We can do it in stages, and it's primarily the fiber architecture that will allow us to do that. So that's why we say anywhere between summer and fall, depending upon what neighborhood you might be living in.
Does this mean that none of the current channels are negotiable to exchange for C-SPAN 2? Believe me, our chairman of our company is a former head of the board of C-SPAN.
founding member.
Really? Yeah, founding member of the board of C-SPAN, and if, he would encourage us to add it. But unfortunately, as we've discovered, anytime we talk about swapping one channel for another channel, you always find great supporters of the channel that's supposed to be dropped. And there's always economic considerations as well as programming agreement issues with those particular programmers, that if you drop one of the sister channels, then you have to pay penalties on the, on the price you pay for the other channels that they own. So there's a lot of factors that go into making channel changes. And we would prefer, at this point, to wait until we have the new system in place, sufficient capacity to add channels like C-SPAN 2 that are clearly desired by the community, and not to try to do more swapping that we've already done once. Well, twice, I should say, in my near memory, one time better than the other time.
But unfortunately, on neither occasion were we given C-SPAN as one of the options to vote for.
Well, certainly, anybody could have written into the survey, too. I'm not sure how the survey was structured.
It listed the top three or four that had been repeatedly requested through our marketing and customer contact.
That was the second survey. The first one was wide open.
Right, and you had options to write in. It's always difficult because of a channel like C-SPAN, good education, important government programming. Unfortunately, people always want to see the old movies first, and the tide really goes in that direction. As John mentioned, continental support C-SPAN, and although I can't offer it to you directly through cable, I can access you to all the numbers through America Online or the Prodigy Show Services right now that can get you on to C-SPAN's chat lines. And they are doing, because a lot of communities don't have C-SPAN 2, they're doing more and more of a review of their day's programming in a text form on the online services right now. So I'd be happy to access you to those numbers and give you some background information.
Well, that, for a lot of people, they may not have computers or want to pay for the services. And let's not forget, this is going to be an election year, and most of the candidates on the Republican side are in the Senate. So I think there is, aside from all the legislation that's coming, coming up for a vote, there is even more reason to provide that channel than the House channel. In fact, if we have to do with just one C-SPAN, I'd rather have C-SPAN 2. We hear you, but every member of the House of Representatives runs at 96, every member. And the road to the White House, which is their critical program, is on C-SPAN 1. So I- I'm glad to have both. We realize that. I could do without the national channel.
Is there any chance of getting C-SPAN 2 before the election?
Before the November election?
Yeah.
There's a good possibility you'll have it before the November election, yes.